Come on Tate, now's your chance.
Alrighty, it is 5:30 so we will begin our pre-meeting. Can I get a roll call please?
Mayor He.
Present.
Mr. Hell.
Present.
Mr. Robert.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gobbles.
Present.
All commission members present.
I will now turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you Mayor. Michelle can we start with the numbers for first item? Our first item is to talk about downtown streetlights. As you know, I've kind of had those on hold as part of our overall dispute we're having with Johnson Controls. However, at this point, we're getting pressure to make a decision unless that we incur a cost increase. You know, whether I accept that position or not, that's Johnson Controls' position currently. And in order to avoid that, we would have to let them proceed with the streetlights by July 11th. I got this letter from them last week. So, we have managed to, so the original issue with the streetlights, as I've identified for you in various forums that we've discussed it, was that they weren't really what we thought we were getting. What was in the scope was just streetlights. Pretty much every other location where we currently have streetlights with unlighted bollards and the other locations, no sound, no digital banner holders has had been presented to us at various points. But that's clearly what's in the scope of work. Early on, we said, well, that's not acceptable. We have to have some sound. We have to have the banner holders. People are expecting those. What can we take out of the contract in order to accomplish that? And Will Sadler was nice enough to surrender the roof work at the wastewater treatment plant, which you can see at the top in green. That was, that falls into the category of things that are not energy-saving measures, but were nonetheless included in the contract under the concept of capital avoidance. In other words, things that eventually we would do over the next 20 years, but we could roll them into this project and finance them through the facility that we have established with Bank of America. And so that's not, they're fine with deleting that. That is not, it doesn't go to their, their metrics for achieving energy savings and it frees up a lot of money that can be used for the additional streetlight options. The other two deducts are things we negotiated as part of our dispute resolution process. See, they're not a lot, but altogether, it saves $145,000 available, will be available to upgrade the sort of streetlight product that we would get. So, the red are obviously what the various upgrades would cost. And what I would say are critical amongst those are the lighted bollards. So, where the, every other streetlight fails to be, instead of a blank colorless bollard, you would have a bollard that would glow. We'll show you what it would look like potentially in a minute here. Would glow in its place. And sound just at the four corners. So add speakers just at the four corners to streetlights that would be installed there. And then banner holders, which you see at the bottom. I would not recommend considering sound for speakers for all 18 downtown streetlights. Or 18 of the downtown streetlights, let alone the entire downtown, which you see as Well, that, that's what the money looks like. That's what we can buy. Michelle, can we get the drawings now? We met with them. We had, what they brought in, sort of examples of what these looked like. It was like a miniaturized version. Not actually here at Chambers with them and they identified some of the various options. Will and Matt and Brett and I can't remember who else was there. I looked at those and our consensus was, we tried to find the thing that would most closely match what we have. It's not changing. For example, the lights in the, in front of City Hall, the lights in the back parking lot, Toledo Street parking lot. They're stained. We tried to find fixtures that would be similar in character to those. So what we thought was the most similar was the one you see circled there at the top. I don't know what it's called, but that's the way the globe would look. It is a, we had a lot of debate about glass versus not glass. I think we ended up concluding that it doesn't make a lot of difference. So we should go with the most durable of the two. See the finial at the top. Again, that was intended to match what is downtown as nearly as possible. You go to the pole now. So you can find it. That's all they all kind of look like to me. That is the matching pole for that sort of light and the highlight. That would be, those are the two bollard options that match that style light, which is called the Charleston style. And one on the right is the lighted. So, want to open that up for discussion? Thoughts about the upgrades? Thoughts about letting them proceed with the options that we've reviewed with them? You know, I mean, as we got into this, this project management team, which is Will and Matt and myself, thought about it. You know, we're honestly not sure. We couldn't have done better ourselves, better than this price ourselves doing the project, but it's in the contract now and Johnson Controls is not going to let it go. I'm fighting for it. Easy path forward is to see what the project maker selection is. Get it done. So it's a longish lead time this. Once we turn them loose, it's like 18 weeks. I will start.
Hold on.
18 weeks. Slow discussion, please.
Greg, I have a question. Those Charleston lights that you were just showing us? Are you saying those are the lights or are you saying the very first one that you showed us with the?
Well, the one, everything that was circled in yellow was a component of what the product would be. So the whole lights have that top that you saw at first with the finial on it. And then that pole that you saw second. And then the bollards are the last thing. The bollards will replace every other current streetlight.
Why do we need bollards in place there?
Well, that or a white gold base on the ground, the sidewalk, because of that.
So it's a, just the overall look, completes the overall.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
But some of the bollards that were lit at the top, is that accurate?
Correct. The ones that we're proposing to add were $52,000 are lit. And so they'll glow at night.
And on that, on that thought, do we need that much light in downtown or will that create other issues of too much light, like downtown is too bright?
Those are, those are quite low, four feet high. They don't really, it's not adding light as such.
That's a good point.
It's just kind of adding character.
Yeah.
The light poles themselves are cast aluminum, like most of the other things that sell there, is that correct?
I believe that.
Okay, I don't know how that compares with, what it is with that now that is rusted and ugly and
Those would be steel, I would guess. Let's do something different then. Yeah, well, that's the idea. They don't rust. They're obviously not as strong as steel either.
I find proceeding with the recommendations for the looks, I'm not a
Yeah.
So as well as for going that roof, like are we going to have to put that into capital, like coming up then? Or like it's still going to need to be done at some point, correct?
The roof, well, that's the thing about these so-called capital avoidance items. They, you know, weren't even in our capital planning.
Okay.
So it's not anything.
Okay.
Well, Will's.
I like the idea of speakers at the four corners. I like the looks of those poles. I like the consideration that you gave to tie into the stuff that is stained, the lights that are already existing that are stained. You know, I don't, I, there's nothing in there that was disagreeable to me.
I definitely like the speakers, at least at the four corners on, with that. I feel like that still radiates the whole downtown, coming from the four corners.
To think of a volume, is it going to be an issue that's there but not everywhere else?
I mean, it'll be appropriate for events that are focused on the four corners. Like First Fridays, that's not something we're doing this year. We've got bands all over the place. It's not an issue for First Fridays.
At Christmas, will we hear music off the outside?
You'll, you'll hear the, hear it at Comstock and at the four corners.
And they will have banners.
So that's the add-on for the digital banners. Yes, the banners holders are a part of what we can get for that with our sensors.
I'm good with it.
I'm good. Alright, there's nothing else. Michelle, can we have the markup of the rules of procedure? I want to continue our discussion regarding the rules of procedure. Somebody who wanted more time to look at those. So, what I've put up here is markup that was in your packet last time with a couple of additional items that we discussed last time. We get to the red marks where they first occur, Michelle.
There was one up there.
Yeah, there, we missed one in the back.
It was right there. It was really small. Right there. Got one there.
That's right, thank God. It's right next to the tree.
Yes.
It's little.
Oh, yeah.
That was my two members then. Yeah. So, oh, there you go. There you go. That's the key. Yeah, show all backup. So just harmonizing that with the charter that provides for two members to call. Okay, you can scroll on down. So, there we go. So, meeting order was, the order of the agenda was in conflict with the idea of having a consent agenda because of both minutes and vouchers would be on the consent agenda, but then if you have a consent agenda, probably those two items. So what I added in was proclamations that you decided you did not want on the consent agenda. Just put parenthetically after minutes and vouchers that those would be in that order if there were no consent agenda. And then obviously, consent agenda was already there. So if we can scroll down a little more, Michelle. Consent agenda, oops. Okay, alright. Sorry. More slowly, there you go. So, these are the items that would be on the consent agenda. Again, only the red are changes from what your rules currently say. I took out a ward of bids, which was in conflict with itself because further defined what sort of bids could be on the consent agenda later on. And I took out proclamations. And then I added the language there for the procedure. This we saw last time, the procedure for removing items from the consent agenda, any one member, jux. Consent agenda. The only other change, which we also talked about last time, was just inserting what you'd already done by resolution regarding time limits on public participation. So we just added that. They have not been updated with that change. So those are the changes that I think should be made, but happy to hear anything else that you'd like us to address and we can pull it up.
Is Mr. Global elderly reviewed this?
He did review our package. He's here.
You haven't reviewed it.
Good evening, man of mayor, commission members. The proposed amendments are consistent with your city charter, state law, and all parliamentary procedure.
Thank you.
Anything else on rules of procedure, any?
So that'd be brought to us two weeks?
Yeah, we'll add it to your next consent number action if you're all okay with that.
Yep.
Number three, I am going to turn it over to our former mayor to present an idea regarding Comstock Christmas.
Thank you very much. First of all, it's nice to see you in person and not on Zoom. I'd like to thank the mayor and the commission administration for again, I tell the mayor every time I see her, I don't think of Christmas every day of the year. But this time of year is when you get the gap, you do these things or you can't put them in place for, for the fall. You were very kind when I came to you for an idea that we had for the city-county Christmas tree of an artificial tree. You were very generous to say, yes, you would match 25,000 of that if the county would. And then I would raise the 60,000 to do that, which that tree would last 20, 25 years or so. So I thought it made a lot of sense. You all made, thought it made sense. The county did not. I'd like to thank County Commissioner Collins made the motion to, to move that forward. There was no support for it, but you know, I'm not one to look at, that was a decision that they made. I'm not going to argue with it. You know, hopefully someday they'll, they'll see the light that that's the right thing to do. And so what, what do you do from here? You know, you move forward. And what I'd like to propose, that, that contribution was $25,000 and again, that was very generous of the city of Adrian. This is a, so I thought we'll return our attention from the city-county tree to Comstock and working towards our Sussulus Intenium, which is amazingly three years away. The current artificial tree we have is, last year was 29 feet. That tree, we can add three foot sections up to 41 feet plus star of either three feet or six feet, whichever one we get. But so this, I've worked with Wintergreen Corporation from last year. I've been working with them. They have been fantastic through this. And even though we missed the timeline, I asked, you know, what would it, what would it cost if we added two sections this year, two three-foot sections to the tree? And they were nice enough to give us a 15% discount, even though time-wise we missed that. They said, yes, we would give that to you. So the total for two new sections, actually, if you remember the tree last year, the base of that tree would now be level number three. It would be two sections below that. So it's getting to be, I think, quite substantial. A little, again, width of the star would be somewhere around 45 feet when it's done. Hopefully, at Sussulus Intenium. And we'll, we'll continue, I promise to continue to go out and raise money and private money. I really think that tree was bought by, by four groups, the city of Adrian, Kuanas, the Hickman family, and the Katney family. And I personally, I can go inside after that and try and ask other people to do others. I can do that. But I don't think that's right. I think the four that did that originally, if they all are in agreement, that we can move that tree up to, to that height. We have to stick with the four and that's, that's that giving tree. So they've, they've given us an invoice. I have forwarded to the city administrator. The two three-foot sections would be roughly $5,400 each, for a total of $9,600 shipped. Total is $10,391.78. That will put the tree up this year to 35 feet plus its star. So it would be about 38 feet. Yeah, I, I think, you know, I don't really have to sell Comstock Christmas River Walk for all of you. It's, it's, it's worked only because it's worked because the community has accepted it and been a part of it. Many of you said in here, we had a tree in the park every year. And I get so many stories from people each year that tell me they either got engaged in front of their tree, family tree at the park. Actually, two, two couples that had lost a spouse and were decorating the tree. It happened to be next to each other. They met each other two years ago and last year I saw them in the park and they got married. And so it's some amazing stories of what, what has happened with that. It is, I think, what, what I love about it the most is that it is, it represents every segment of the community. Anybody in the community can and do buy trees. You can walk through the park and you can see every segment of, of this community and outside the city. So I thank you for all of your past support. I would really ask if the city would be willing to, to move, move on this and on your next agenda. That we can let Wintergreen Corporation know that we want to move forward with this and if, if we are, I have the volunteers lined up to have another fluffing party. And that's, it sounds funny, but it's a lot tougher than you think.
I was going to say, that's new to see.
It is to see. But so I did, I did want you to know, I have gone out and if you're willing to move forward, I have raised the money that I think at this height, I think it needs to be, no offense, and believe me, I've talked to DPW in parks. No offense to the city of Adrian. I think when we get up to this height, it needs to be professionally assembled and disassembled. And so not only do we have some, I raised the money to pay for the company to put it up, but also take it down in the next year.
So
Mayor, man, that invoice says $10,400. Are you asking for a quarter of that or are you asking us for $10,400?
I'm asking you for $10,400.
And then the next, so that'll take us to 35 and then your goal is 45?
Then, then I, then my plan in the next two years is to go to the others involved in purchasing that tree and asking for the next two limits.
To make it the 45 for the Sussulus.
That's correct.
So we're just the first ask when you'll ask other people from here?
This would be the only ask I'd come back from. The others, I would go back to the other three that were involved in the next two years and ask that. And I wouldn't be saying that if I hadn't bought that up before, before I bought it to you, that I would be coming back.
I find with that, I think we're, we were ready to invest 25 grand in the holiday season. Another 10,400, it'll, it'll have the same longevity, you know, and we can't get people to play in our field, so we just have to take care of ourselves. So I think that was a beautiful tree last year. I like big trees too, so I, I'm in favor of it.
And the Riverwalk is so important.
The county-city construction disappointing. And like yourself, I appreciate Commissioner Collins going out on a limb and unfortunately don't support, but Riverwalk's important. Like Mr. Roberts said, I mean, it's, people look forward to it. It's more price paid, it makes it holiday cheer, so.
Thank you.
Do we have, are the speakers permanent in there now, ready to go for this year or not? That was my
You said you weren't asking us for any
I don't know anything. I'm just asking.
No, no, we are moving forward with it. Yeah, the last year was, you know, and that needs to go forward. But the city was going to put where the, the electronics or, or the sound. That, we didn't do last year, so Vision Technologies donated the, the workings for the sound in the park last year. With, with the grant from the Board of Realtors, we purchased the speakers. We had to go through the state of Michigan to get permission with the speakers on the state bridge. So we moved forward with that. Now, if we get the, we, we have an invoice for the, for the actual guts of the, of the sound to project the sounds of. Yes, there will be sound in our, hopefully, not only for Christmas, but yet this fall. And made a huge difference last year. If, if you've been through the park each year and then last year walking through, the sound really did make a big difference. Had a lot of good commitments. So obviously want to thank the Board of Realtors for, for that donation. And I will say tonight, also already have received confirmation from Old National Bank that they will be the lease sponsor again at Comstock. They've contributed $5,000 towards the expenses that we have at the park to move it forward. It's become a nice community tradition and again, it's thanks to all the people that, that contribute and decorate those trees and it's made it special. Thank you all for that.
Okay, we'll bring the resolution on that next time. The next item, number four on pre-meeting agenda, we have a request from Bob Evans for a liquor license. Which I understand to be a request for our only remaining quota liquor license. We have one license available to us in our quota. So it's not a transfer it. That means that if you were to grant this request, there would be no more liquor licenses available else, other than by way of purchasing them elsewhere and transferring them, or there are development, later redevelopment licenses under special circumstances down the road. So we didn't put, we have not put that on the agenda. We wanted to start with a discussion with you all, whether that's something you would want to entertain or not.
How long has that quota liquor license been in the drawer that we haven't had anybody interested in it?
It was gone at one time. So it's come back either because somebody, and we've not been able to get information from the LCC where it came from.
Do we ever get, I mean, no, it's, I've been here four years and this is the first time this has come up, what I can remember. I'm, I'm just trying to gauge what the demand is for that. If it's been in there for 10 years, but I mean, why wouldn't we really sit down? Obviously, I don't know, beer and pancakes don't go that good together, but it's but that's not mine, that's not mine to figure out. If they want to buy the liquor license, they can buy the liquor license.
Well, it's not really buy, that's the fact. When you grant that one of your quota licenses, you were granting them. They do have very substantial market value. I don't know that it's widely known that there's one.
I guess I would rather see it go to an upstart business, an upstart local business, rather than a chain, so to speak. And also, I guess, nothing And also, I guess, nothing against Bob Evans, but I guess they have their market. They've been around for a long time without alcohol. I've never heard of a Bob Evans without alcohol.
Do they have Bob Evans without alcohol?
But I guess I just, if, if, if someone in this room, so to speak, was going to start a, a new restaurant, liquor license is going to be really important to your success. I guess I would rather see it go to somebody like that rather than a chain store.
Unless it's locally owned.
Well. Oh, I, I don't.
I agree with Commissioner Strayer. I'd rather have it in the drawer, so to speak, and when we've got it, when we've got a, a business that's, you know, really going to be a contributing business to downtown, not necessarily downtown in the city. But then, that's a word, especially the value that they have, like, you know, I'm saying to you that, you know.
Really, you're talking about if somebody was wanting to start a new restaurant or a bar or something and they're looking at coming to Adrian, and all of a sudden, we don't have a liquor license available. It could be just the thing that sends them to another city.
How did they find out there was one available?
Well, and the other thing is, I know there's a, there's a brewery coming into town eventually, you know, it's that, won't they need that? Or does theirs come?
There's comes with them, I think.
We can get a redevelopment license.
Yes, they, they would be able to get a redevelopment.
Just want to make sure since they bought that, okay.
But liquor license would be a treable asset, I mean, it's an asset. I mean, like twenty-five, thirty thousand, I mean, they're.
Some places are way more than that.
Yeah.
Liquor license to be able to sell to Olive Garden.
Because they're all by the same companies, so.
Like, is that?
Well, I mean.
Looking to sell out, or going to close down as soon as they get it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they're, what's their advantage?
Yeah, there is. And what happens if we say no or are we, I mean, not liable?
No, it's your, it's your choice.
It's just totally our choice. We don't have any reasons, nothing.
Fairly common in communities, but have them, I mean, a lot, most communities anymore really don't have any available. But when you have them available, it's common for the community to, to, as Commissioner Strayer said, hold those for something that they really want to see have. As opposed to, you know, there, there's an option to go out on the open market and buy one if you really want to have one.
Or they sit on it. Bob Evans sits on it.
They could do that too. It helps nobody.
I'm a big go for me, get out of the way kind of guy, but that's, that's, it's weird, the dynamic of pancakes and beer, but again, it's odd.
Could we use it as bargaining chip to get someone, to get another new business here? I mean, could that be something we market and promote that we have an open liquor license? Come to Adrian, we have a, we have a license for you?
Potentially, yes.
I would really like to look at that.
Got a community development rep.
Yeah, so I mean, I agree, that's something we can, like, make known to businesses that, that.
I think it requires us to get some better information from the LCC.
Yeah.
But I don't know what Bob Evans' intentions are.
I would like to know that too, because I think it's very strange.
Okay, well, I will share with them your, your basic thoughts, so we'll see if they want to see.
What are we going to get? And unfortunately, the fact that Green Madison, so. Very odd.
Okay, well, I'm not hearing any of it, but thanks.
Awesome ideas.
I'll do some more investigation and see if they want to come or pump here and make a presentation. Next item is welcome sign medallion. So these are the service club medallions and others that are, were on the side of the sign. Matt is on Zoom tonight. Available to answer your questions about those. I think basically their, our cost in making them is about eighty dollars each one. I think, Mary, you asked me this, I don't know the.
I had somebody from the Adrian Garden Club reach out to me. They had noticed they had come down and they came to me because the state garden club will make them whatever size is needed for them and actually do it for them. They don't even have to pay and we don't have to pay. It's part of the state garden club, she was saying, because they were a part of that. I was asking her more details of this past first Friday. But they like to do their, like, make theirs because they do it a certain way, because they're part of that state garden club. But they'll do whatever size or whatever is needed, they just need to know the parameters of that. So that's one, you know, and so are we thinking, so I guess then that got me thinking and that's why I brought it up. Yes, they are down and I was waiting for other service clubs to, to notice they were down and wonder what was going to happen. Are we looking at observing that cost ourselves? Are we going to ask these groups, especially when it's, you know, it is, isn't a very big fee? I didn't know what it was actually until tonight, but, you know, I don't know where, what direction we wanted to go with that. But I just know on the garden club side, they said they can, the state can actually, state garden club can handle theirs on that end, I do know that.
State garden club, what is that?
I don't know, there's.
The state rotary club, so there's, we have rotary clubs in Adrian, but then there's some state of Michigan rotary club, right?
Yeah.
The district.
I didn't know it existed either, she was telling me that they're part of that state system, that our garden club is part of that, so.
Funny that, because the signs are up there, of course, they're all dilapidated and they're all, you know, all would need to be here. But there's, I don't know, is Zanta still a thing?
Yes.
Okay, well, they're up there and they're faded and, you know, you've got two rotary clubs and you've got Kiwanis and, you know, and I personally, I like, I like to see it, but if they're not really expensive, I think.
And I think that there would be other newer organizations like, you know.
That's what I was thinking of too.
Who might want to be up there.
They want to take them all down?
They're all down now. They are down.
They have to be refinished, yeah, they're.
So determine what, what we want to put up there and who and that's all.
How?
Who was going to pay for it?
Are they each?
Eighty bucks.
Eighty bucks, every one of the clubs will pay eighty bucks, I have it, the house. Now, eighty bucks isn't too much for us to do it either, but. So I don't wish for them to go.
Is there a, is there a, there's new clothes in the community, so how do we vet who goes up and who goes down? Or is there enough room for everyone? I, that's a question I would have, are we going to have a system?
Matt, how many were up there, do you remember? You're the one chicken down.
There were sixteen of them. And I, I do want to mention that I, I got an updated price today and it's about a hundred dollars from the contractor. And then it would require our guys to install it as well.
There were sixteen. Um, well, we don't know.
I don't even know who was up there, yeah. Well, one you couldn't even read because Commissioner Bowes and I went out before they took them down. And one, you couldn't even read anything, it was completely white because it had faded out, so we don't even know what it was.
But I, I did think we need to put something out to the community.
Right.
And ask, how many can we fit? Is it just the sixteen or can we fit more or?
Can we fit more, Matt, or is it only the sixteen that will fit?
That, that was the extent of what we could fit. Unless we, we try to tighten everything closer, and at that point it might look, look more cluttered.
You gotta remember, you're going fifty dollars an hour past it, and if you want to make any impact, they gotta be big enough, right?
Right, right, right.
And what if it's nineteen, you don't want to be on.
Well, that's the thing, how do we, I mean.
Yeah.
Want to work on those rules and procedures?
No, no, I tried to do that with marijuana. You have the street name or the public place.
Matt, do you have any idea who was on there? Do you still have them so we could look at who was there? I know that one we couldn't even read at all, but at least so we knew, knew who was up there before they were taken down.
Yeah, we, we have them all and we have a list of everyone that was on them. Well, mostly from what we could read as well, but we, we have a general idea of everyone that was on there previously.
I mean, I like the concept of service clubs, but how do you define service clubs? And, you know, the, the, the historic ones of the the rotaries, Kiwanis. Those are, are good because people come to the community, want to know if there's active clubs around. But, but then there's the local specific ones, and I, I don't know the background of Zanta or Athena or, or, you know, how big of an organization they are, or how small, or if we want to promote local ones only, or, you know, what. I don't know what goes up there, but I do know that we don't want to change them out every six months. You know, it seems like there's decent turnover in the nonprofit world and it's a confusion between nonprofit and, and.
Zanta's a county organization?
Yeah.
So it's not just the Adrian?
Yeah.
So, I mean, is that like a deciding factor?
No, I mean, I, I don't think it is necessarily, but you know, what I would like is the, the strong established clubs or organizations in town to have their spots up there, because I think it's something that defines our community. And if they've been here for five, ten, fifteen something years, they've proven themselves. They're a part of the community where there's plenty of very worthy organizations that have been in town for six months. But they're not, like, they haven't established themselves to be put on a sign next to the city symbol.
I believe the three colleges were on there, is that correct, Matt?
They were on the major sign. I don't think they had their emblem on them. I could be wrong.
You're correct.
Very, oh, I.
So we don't have to worry about them.
Are they listed, I can't remember, are they listed on the welcome sign now?
No.
It does.
We took them off and it ain't.
Yeah, so where you.
The only way they're on there is if they're on the medallion, that's what I thought.
They do also have a separate sign near the welcome sign that says.
That's what I thought.
We were both wrong.
Okay, good.
Um, I'd be happy to make some phone calls to a couple of, you know, like Chuck Chase and the guys around us. Just get their ideas of other clubs that are out there and bring it to the next meeting. If you want to do that, otherwise.
He has a list of who they are.
Can we get that?
Mr. Goss said, oh, we, we can probably share the list of what he had and.
Yeah, but then I was talking about if there's anything new that's come up.
Or, or what other, I mean, that's where we started with the naming city assets was looking at other cities who have done the same thing and figure out what their policy is, and they usually have a good start on that, so.
I know Jackson has all of theirs listed, I can reach out to Jackson on that. They have all their service clubs listed like that too.
You want me to do anything, right?
Yeah, and just figure out if they do.
I could ask them. I only know that because I was in there the other day and I noticed on their sign that they have on the sides like that.
That's a good problem to have, that we might have sixteen clubs that might.
Anyone on that?
Nope.
None in there, turn it back over to you, Brian, all right?
All right. Are there any other items that anybody, Commissioners would like to bring forth?
I apologize, but I, I didn't know. I, I would like to talk about Adrian area leak and I don't know. I'd kind of like it to be not on the agenda, but during the commission comments during the regular meeting. John did send me a list of things to talk about, the highlights for.
Do you have any updates on Bone Pool since the last update you sent us? Because you thought they might be out and you might have a better idea on those valve, that valve?
Yeah, not as of today. Will is going down tomorrow and examining the plans again. The old faded blueprints down there. When we looked at them during our last visit, our goal was to try to find valves on there. There weren't valves shown on there. That was, we're looking for those because that was our expectation that that was the cause of the problem. Based on the report that I shared with you, my report, American leak detectors, it appears that it's not really a drain at all, based on their assessment. Their assessment was, you know, performed during three hours, part of which are where it was really pouring down. They haven't done a thorough assessment yet, but I believe, the point where they left was that it was the return lines that flowed back to the gutters. There's a leak in the gutter system. That, that makes some amount of sense because if you think about it, you know, if, if, if it were other than the return at the point where the water level got below the gutters, then it should stop leaking, but it doesn't. Continues to lose water. We conclude that's because of pump holes that back and tries to put it back in pool, but it's getting lost somewhere in that process. So Will's going down in the morning, trying to look and see if he can find a likely source on the plans for where that might be occurring. We have a pool contractor at Western Pools who would be willing to start digging out there next week. But absent knowing better where to dig, hesitant to, it's not really big, it's breaking concrete, breaking pool. So I'm hesitant to turn them loose on that without some greater precision as to where we is to inform our educated guests, think it might be the leak detectors, American leak detectors date for coming back. We have reserve is currently July twenty eighth. What they would do is they'd come back and plug all two hundred holes in the gutter system and pressurize that and test it to try to determine where exactly. So we'll see what tomorrow brings. So we have both of those dates tentatively scheduled.
So with a, just to take that kind of a step further, on the east end of that pool, isn't there a kiddie pool that doesn't work anymore? Is it filled in?
There was one gentleman, I'm sure, you know, this is Brad and Mary, but that had been with the pool for years and years, supervised everything, he was from our local.
John Knox.
Has he been involved in these?
Oh, yeah. No, he's, he's been out there when we were doing our testing, he was there with us. Really. Hard to, you know, I, I, we've been joking that erect Will's vacation, he was on vacation last week because he could not, you know, stop thinking about, well, what the heck is the problem here? You know, as I say, finally, try to make, it, it didn't make any sense that it would be like, like, because it only happened when the pump was on. Well, what drain would there be that only operated when pump was on? There wouldn't be one unless you had a check valve in the drain for some reason, but we couldn't understand why that possibly be. Now it makes a little bit more sense that it's a leak in the turn lines trying to return water back to the pool. But the other problem we had when we were out there is we were trying to test the pump. But not have it run through the filters because there's a lot of expensive filters. There's three filter chambers, each one's got, I think about thirty filter tubes in them, each filter tube costs like seven dollars. So we didn't want to erect those by running the algae filled water through them, so we tried to isolate them. But I don't, I don't think it really worked. I don't think you can ice, you can isolate all three of them. And they're meant to be individually isolated, but if you try to bypass all three, I don't think the pump on really operates. I don't think we got a true test, so that's also one of the, what Will wants to look at. Other than that, there's a way that. To better analyze what that pump is doing. You know, a possible, you know, pump, like everything else out there is super old, it's twenty years old. That's, that is at its maximum life expectancy, that would be even if it weren't pumping chlorinated water, which it is. So it's really at the outside of its expected life. Is another possible theory that it just can't keep up, that once the water starts rushing in there. that you can't pump it out, pump it back out through the filters and back out as fast as it's coming. Water would be lost out of the drain and it could, uh, come. Still, uh, you know, still a mystery as of today, but.
How old is the pool?
50 years old.
What is the normal, like, full of pool like that?
Uh, you know, I couldn't tell you, but I think, you know, all of its components should have been updated many years ago. That's their statement. Essentially, everything in that mechanical room is 20 years old and all of it. Um, but one down. Places, a bunch of valves that don't work at all. Boiler is sort of cherry ripe together. Mess of wiring on the side to keep it running. Gutter system is 50 years old. The liner has soft spots throughout. We thought we would make it through this year with the liner, which we will if we can get the water to cooperate, but, uh, pretty much every component of that pool needs to be updated. And so then the question becomes, you know, and we're working on trying to get an answer to this. If we were to move forward, pull steam ahead with, uh, with a rehabilitation effort, how soon could that reasonably be done? You know, are we really talking like two years out for that to happen? And so what? Ever we, well, whatever our odds are of ever getting open this year, are we really trying to make sure we don't lose next season as well by figuring out what the problem is and at least putting a bandaid on it? So we can, uh, uh, a reasonable program for rehabilitation.
I ask that as we progress with this, that we're taking a global view and not just addressing that now. We've got all kinds of issues and that we take into account the programming that goes on there. Um, I was at Adrian High School today because my daughter's involved in it. There's 120 kids on the city swim team for the summer and they're inside. Part of the allure and the attraction of the swim program is to swim outside. Can work this year? Oh, well, but there's, there's components to that pool that if we're going to start breaking concrete, let's talk to the swim program and make sure that we're addressing some of their needs because it's a successful city recreation program that, that does a lot for a lot of kids every summer and is growing.
So I wish I knew more, but that's how I know right now.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. It's now time for public comment. Please state your name and address. Have any public comment, be it Zoom or in person.
This is Carolyn Mar at 148 North Scott Street. I'm the current, uh, president of the Adrian Garden Club and we did request a few years ago, um, wanting to replace the sign on the city welcome sign. We will purchase a sign from the, uh, Michigan, uh, Garden Club's organization. It is an oval, but we would not be able to attach it to the background there. Our question was if we got a new sign, would the city put it up?
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
Of course. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we will see everyone at 7:00 PM or the regular city commission. It is now seven o'clock and time to begin the Adrian City Commission meeting for July 6th, 2021. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
In the United States of America, and in the Republic where we stand, one is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2021 regular meeting?
So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with the second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2021 special meeting?
So moved. Gauss.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to move the presentation of accounts until after the resolutions and to strike resolution R 21 dash 137.
So moved.
Support Gauss.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda to move the presentation of accounts until after the resolutions and to strike our 21 137 from the agenda as approved by an all yes vote.
Moving on to the regular agenda. First up, we have ordinances. Ordinance number, number 21 dash 007 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning and development regulations to rezone 623 Frank Street from B2 Community Business District to R4 Single Family Residential District. Moving on to resolutions. R 21 dash 130 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for record service. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments on Zoom or in person?
Uh, Zoom would be Ken Tokars. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, 110 South Locust. Um, it is common knowledge that justice can be blind and I believe that the same thing can be said for city government and specifically the Adrian City Commission. I'm writing this after reviewing this past Adrian City Commission meeting and specifically the events that took place in regards to the City of Adrian bid for towing services and the banter that took place among city commissioners after me, Mr. Neal spoke and I offered the following. Let's start with the commissioner who broke protocol and set a precedent by addressing the concerns raised by one of the bidders. The city commissioners, I would like to remind you or advise not to respond to public comment. I agree with this commissioner's decision to break protocol to address concerns raised by an Adrian resident, but I also question why this commissioner is selective in their responses and why they chose to ignore concerns that I raise about the City of Adrian pension deficit, which topped $26 million per the most recent MERS report. Transparency specific to bidding is important and I question why all commissioners are blind when it comes to the pension deficit. The city engineer did not respond to requests for additional information from bidders. And while I agree that this is an issue, I challenge any of the commissioners to throw the first stone at the city engineer when the mayor, Commissioner Strayer, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Hou, Commissioner Roberts, do not respond to emails that I send to you. It is no different. We may not agree, but that does not absolve you from responding or sharing your opinion. Commissioners Strayer and Hou made me nauseous when they raised concerns about issues that they had with the had previously brought up three years ago when the towing service was last sent out for bids. The Adrian City Commissioners are the legislative body and if you had concerns about the bids from three years ago, I am asking what you, Commissioners Strayer and Hou, did as a legislative body during the past three years to prevent this from happening. To date, the legislative body for the City of Adrian has ignored the need to update its purchasing policy. So I question how you can speak on this subject when you have remained silent for the past three years. On a side note, the Adrian City Commission has not addressed emergency bids and it is not a matter of if, but when the issue of an emergency bid will be raised again and the same banter will happen again because the Adrian City Commission is blind. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor.
Commissioner Hou, go ahead.
Contrary to what, uh, Mr. Tokar said, I have been pounding the table in regards to our bid process. When it comes to this particular resolution, um, when I bring up comments about what happened three years ago, because it's the same thing. And, and the problem I have with this whole process, it's messy. Um, the dies, die, I's were not dotted and T's were not crossed. Um, I feel like, um, this whole bid process and this particular resolution, the dog and pony show, I think that, uh, when you find reasons to give a contract to a certain vendor, um, I have issues with that. And I have been pounding that table for the last three years. So I'm going to vote no. I, I, I challenge my colleagues, do you want the citizens to pay 25% more for a service? Now, the city does not incur a big cost when it comes to the record service, but our citizens do. So whether it be come out of our general fund or not, we opt into a contract to provide a service for our citizens and we're telling them, we want you to pay more for that same service. It's not my job to drive around the city and look at lots to find out if there's certain park or, or certain spaces enough to, to field cars. That's out of my pay grade. But what is my job is to have oversight with the process. If, if you didn't want to bid it out, that's fine, but I, I still have some concerns with the last meeting where the, uh, engineer refused to return a, a, a phone call from a constituent, a business owner that's been in the business since the eighties. So with that being said, um, I'm going to follow up on this. I don't know how this vote's going to go, but I know that I'm not going to ask my citizens I represent to pay more for a service when I have a reputable company that was a low bid that can get the job done.
Commissioner Gauss?
I'll follow up on what Commissioner Hou just said and some comments that were made both at the last meeting as well. Um, it just seems like we've been going through a whole almost circus-like atmosphere to find someone to do our towing. And we've got three good, seemingly good companies here now. Um, and I'm not sure why we're being asked to, to approve the one that's the most expensive. As Commissioner Hou just voiced, um, you know, the fact that, um, they are, um, there's a 25% difference between, uh, the low bid and the high bid and it is miniscule of, of miniscule concern in terms of what the city's going to expend because we just don't do that much business, but our citizens are going to be taking their cars out of impound and paying towing fees and everything else. And they're the ones that are going to get hit by the bigger numbers. And, and I don't particularly like that. Um, I think that it's our job amongst other things is to find, search for the best quality, the best service at the lowest cost. And I'm not, I'm not sure that we're doing that tonight with this, with this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead. Oh, no.
Was that?
If it's public comment, it cannot be.
I was going to.
It's only commissioner comment now.
I was going to ask ma'am because my computer had froze during public comment if I was still able to make a comment after the commissioners are not. I was not able to get through.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. No, sorry. Hearing no more commissioner comment. I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
No.
Commissioner Gauss.
No.
Mayor Heath.
No.
Commissioner Hou.
No.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution, uh, denied from a four no, three yes vote. Failed.
Resolution R 21 dash 131 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to approve a budget amendment for bulk trash collection. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments on Zoom or in person? Hearing no public comments, are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21 dash 132 is from utilities. It is a resolution to approve the purchase of a replacement lawnmower for the wastewater treatment plant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support Gauss.
Are there any public comments on Zoom or in person? Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Mister Strayer.
Yes.
Mister Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-133 is from finance. It is a resolution to award an amended bid for a cybersecurity services package. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Mister Strayer.
Yes.
Mister Castleberry.
Yes.
Mister Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-134 is from fire. It is a resolution to approve the purchase of a 2022 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup truck for the Adrian Fire Department. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
I'm Ken Tokars, 110 South Locust. I guess my question with the fire truck or the police chief's fire truck is, will it be driven to Dundee on a regular basis, which is more than 25 miles from the city? And also if the vehicle is going to be driven to Dundee, which is in Washington County, and I believe that the fire chief is also a volunteer or works for the fire department there. Will the city of Adrian vehicle be used to assist in fires in Washington County? Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call please.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Mister Strayer.
Yes.
Mister Castleberry.
Yes.
Mister Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-135 is from transportation. It is a resolution to approve a proposed revised agreement, number 2017-002, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Help. Roll call please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Mister Strayer.
Yes.
Mister Castleberry.
Yes.
Mister Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mister Help.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-136 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve of the appointment of Catherine Desher as the Lenaway Transportation Corporation Transportation Coordinator. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Yep, I'll give it to both. You're giving it to both?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Mister Strayer.
Yes.
Mister Castleberry.
Yes.
Mister Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mister Help.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 21-138 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of the commercial marijuana facilities permit application for Two Hippies LLC, DBA Green Goddess Health. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mister Castleberry.
Yes.
Mister Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mister Help.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Will we pay the vouchers as presented?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mister Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mister Help.
Yes.
Mister Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Watson.
Yes.
Mister Strayer.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
At this time, it is public comment. And before we begin, just to make this not so confusing with being in Zoom and in person, we're going to begin with anyone in person that wants to do public comment and then we will move to Zoom. So therefore we're not interrupting each other. And just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin in person. I will let everyone on Zoom know when we will open it up for you as well. Thank you.
Hello, hello, I'm Keen Ramos for 22 South Winter. You know me by this point. All right. So I'm just letting you know that second Friday is this Friday and that A3 will be putting on our usual stuff in Parish Park starting at 6:00 PM. And I hope many of you will be there to attend. We don't expect to be as long as midnight like it used to be, but we'll be there a while. So hopefully some of you will be there. And of course, this is our first time back, so be a little bit small, but I assure you, we'll get a lot more exciting. Thank you.
Tom Neal, resident, 145 Madison Street, Adrian. The city's got to get back to transparency. I hear from a lot of people and a lot of you weren't on the commission quite a few years ago when we had problems in City Hall. 200 people came to City Hall and we made some changes. This business of people and department heads not calling the residents back, no matter what it is, in Adrian's got to come to a halt. Your city engineer, the poor guy's got more jobs and more things on his plate than he could ever accomplish. But yet the commission, ministry, everybody's throwing him under the bus because they give him all these titles and he, he doesn't have the time to do it. You've got some great department heads in this city. You got a DPW superintendent that's idolized by a lot of communities that he can get the work done and your streets plowed and everything in the winter with the little staff he's got. The utilities department, the water department, cemetery, they're all great. You got to give your city engineers some help. This poor guy is overwhelmed. And the not calling back is unacceptable. I've left out how many messages when his mailbox isn't full about other issues in the city and have yet to get a returned phone call. I've called Mr. Elliott's office a couple of times and he's going to get back with me and I haven't heard from him in four months. Michelle up there does a fantastic job and I know she delivers the messages. She gets back with us. The police department, they get back with us. Some of these departments aren't following up. The commissioner's sitting up here, you're all elected by the people to represent the people and the people want transparency in Adrian. Thank you.
My name is Mike Donahue. I'm a homeowner at 214 Finch Street. And I needed to talk to you about a couple of things that have come up on this side of town and it's nothing, nothing new. I called recently about a fire hydrant kitty corner across the street from us on the corner of Toledo and Finch. It has been out of service for over a year. My home is one of the new homes on Finch Street. It's only 160 years old. This thing could go up in flames any minute. I talked with the police chief. He assured me that they have plenty of water in their trucks to come and take care of it. No, I pay my taxes. I've paid them every year for the last 30 years and it's inexcusable that when I finally did talk to Sid, I can't remember what his last name is, but he's in charge of utilities. He said, he apologized. He said, but that isn't the only one in town that's out. And he said, the money isn't there right now to do it. Inexcusable. If you were in the same situation, I'm sure that would be taken care of. That's one of the things. The next thing is the parking on our side of town. Ever since the east side was designated a high-density area, we have parking all over the place. And as far as I know, they're not supposed to be parking on the streets overnight during the winter. On my block alone, we have no less than seven cars parked. When I talked to the young kid that lived next door to me and they've got four parking spaces and only three cars, you know what he told me? He said, my, I only got one parking ticket and that was, I can't remember, $10 or $15. And I like parking at the curb. Everything is there to where these, this should be taken care of and it's not. We need the follow-up. My wife and I go for walks on a regular basis to Oakwood Cemetery. So we're walking down Clinton and, and all of the streets over there. I've seen cars parked on the sidewalk overnight, on the boulevards overnight, they're off the street to get the, you know, so that the, the plows can come through. And what do I do? I'm there in, in the fall trying to get all these leaves out of the gutter and I can't even do it because cars are parked there. Something's got to be done, folks.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I realize, but thank you.
Mike Raymond, 9580 Spitzer Street, owner of Affordable Towing. I've done the towing contract for eight years now. I thank you for everything that we have done. Just for food for thought for the commissioners, there's currently 29 vehicles outside storage in my lot right now that we have for the city that exceeds the amount that is on the contract for Neil's towing at the 22 that they can handle. So they would have seven cars at this time outside. Contract states that they don't have any other properties outside storage because of 10, the East Michigan street addresses not deemed for storage. I currently have four vehicles inside storage at this time. Two vehicles are permanent. They have to remain for the contract because they're evidence vehicles from the early eighties that will have to be stored inside as well at the Mitch, the Mommy Street address. I just want everybody to be aware that there is a lot going on with this contract that you commissioners didn't look into. You looked at the prices, but you didn't look at the basics of everything of how many vehicles are currently stored. There's times I have 50 vehicles from the city because we're waiting on paperwork from the state of Michigan for auctions. There can be 50 vehicles sitting over there on West Mommy Street. I don't know where you're going to put them all, but that's where it's contracted to. Once I move from that contracted area, the only other place was East Michigan. It's not contracted. That void is a contract for the city of Michigan, city of Adrian. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Mike Neal, owner of Neal Stowing, 235 West Maple. When we bid this, I didn't see that, that the storage was going to be that big of a problem. I mean, if, if, if we needed a place to store these vehicles, our location on Tree Highway, it's a block out of the city. But we have a facility down here to hold 22 cars, 25 cars. It's clean, it's empty, it's gated, it's locked, it's razor wire. If we're going to make a big deal out of the storage, the place right out here, a block from his facility. That what, we didn't bid that in the contract for this. Storage was not in the contract. Storage facilities were not in the contract. We can hold 200. It doesn't matter. What we have is it's on us to figure out what we do with them. Not the city. It's on us. We signed that bid to bid this process. That's what I did. We can fulfill that. We do it every day. Thank you.
Seeing that we have no more public comment in person, I will now open it up for public comment via Zoom. And please remember to please state your name and address and you will see your time listed there on your screen.
Ken Tokars, 110 South Locust, listening to my fellow residents. I agree that Matt is overworked. I think it's ridiculous what you put on him. I think every department head should be putting their own purchase orders together and their own bid documents. And Nathan and his assistant can put it out to bid and make sure that everything, the I's are crossed and the T's are dotted. Listening to the owner of Affordable Towing, my question to the city is, why do we have cars from the 1980s in there? And you might want to ask, are we paying towing or storage fees on those vehicles? Mister Elliott, I think on next door and I emailed a couple of the commissioners back in the fall. If you walk out of city chambers and you go to the southeast corner of Mommy and Broad, there's a flag of concrete that was taken out last year and it still hasn't been replaced. I saw someone trip during the Fourth of July parade. I don't know if you got cameras, but I think it's kind of ridiculous that you're, have a flag of concrete that's been gone because of a water leak during the winter. And now we're already into July and it still hasn't been replaced. Maybe, I know someone suggested that police officers go out and ride around town. Maybe some of you guys should go ride around town and see what some of the citizens are dealing with. Lastly, I want to talk about the pension deficit. Everyone's received the MERS report. And you all know that during the past three years, the pension deficit has increased by $5 million under your watch. And I think that's a shame on the part of the city commission. A couple of months ago, you made the ordinance officers who blight ordinance enforcement is a big issue in the city. But you introduced them into the pension system. And if you look at the MERS report, that added about $600,000 or half a million dollars to the pension deficit. Did you know that when you were voting on this? My concern is what we are doing to our children. I've said this before and I'm going to say it again and everybody does, nobody responds. So I can see where Matt doesn't respond because he's following his leaders. We have a $26 million pension deficit. And all we're doing is we're taking out high interest credit cards in the names of our children. Thank you.
I would like to comment if I may.
Go ahead.
Attorney Nancy Eaton Gordon, office address 160 North Winter Street here in Adrian. I'm here on behalf of my client today, Tanner Automotive. I'm here on behalf of my client today, Tanner Automotive. Just want to clarify a couple inaccuracies that appeared in Mr. Elliott's memorandum that was to the commission. Thankfully, the bid was not taken today, so you have time to reflect and also correct. I wanted to note that the three vehicles that were stored across the street from my client's business at the former cement plant are his personal vehicles. This lot is not being used as an overflow for storage as it's been insinuated in the report. These are in fact three personal vehicles that were moved off the lot by my client so he could help facilitate getting the lot sorted out. He's on vacation right now, but does plan to move those as soon as he returns. He will get them off the property, but they are currently stored across the street on property that he owns, and they are his personal vehicles. Two, contrary to the report, no vehicles were moved from the Tanner Automotive and BK fenced-in lot to unsecured areas otherwhere on the property. In fact, they were transported to B and K's other facility, which is in Hudson. It's actually referenced in the report. Of course, Mr. Elliott, you and your office would probably know these things if you'd bothered to make a phone call or even ask. The fact that you've taken the time to prepare a memo and investigate, including pictures, but not even bothering to follow up or ask, is troubling. One phone call to Mr. Tanner or myself, who you are clearly aware is counsel to the automotive place, could have solved this. You not only referred to me in your memo as saying that you referred to and spoke with counsel about the use of the property before my client bought it, but also included an email in your exhibits from me. So clearly, you knew how to contact me. Instead, you've gone on to assume and accuse. You've accused my client of hiding cars, of improperly expanding his business, of improperly storing cars in unsecured areas, and of being inaccurate. Well, sir, my client resents these implications, and frankly, so do I. One phone call is all it took. Instead, you're running around taking pictures, not asking questions, not following up. And you have now given a wrongful, you've wrongfully assumed and given a wrongful and inaccurate report to the commission. Sir, it's piss-poor performance is what it is, and it needs to stop. It's also misleading regarding affordable towings statement, which I'm sorry that they also got inaccurately reported in here. But in the memo, it says that they have storage outdoors for about two hundred vehicles at the Par Highway Facility in Secured Area. I think you may want to fact-check that because the area from the information I have is not fenced or secured on the Deerfield side. So sad that they got brought into this as well. Finally, I will address the concern from the other parties that this is a matter of about a thousand fifteen dollars a year, and this process is taking so long because it's not being properly done. It's being made overly complicated. And that falls at the city administrator. It needs to be corrected. Please do so. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Halt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the wrecker service contract to Neal's Towing and Auto.
Support, Gauss.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt to award the wrecker service to Neal's Towing. Did they say that correctly, exactly how you said it?
An auto, yeah.
An auto. And I have a second from Commissioner Gauss. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? So I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call please.
Mayor Heath.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
No.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Motion adopted by a six yes, one no vote.
Are there any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Well, on a lighter note tonight, I would like to discuss Adrian Area Little League. And first of all, I would like to thank our Parks Department, specifically Jason, for being a part of the Little League and give you some figures for what has happened this year. We have not had a Little League or Parks Department. Alan, help me with this. Maybe ten, twelve years, about that time? Okay, so this year, we couldn't have Little League last year, so because of COVID. So this year, we had eighteen teams totaling a hundred and eighty-six players. Eight T-ball, five boys machine pitch, one girls machine, machine pitch, two boys minor, one girls minor, and one boys major team. Some highlights from this year is that the girls' machine pitch team sponsored by ZZ Sports Bar and Grill won an interleague tournament, which was very exciting for them, obviously. Interleague means that they played other teams from, oh, Anstead, St. Creek, and I, I might be wrong on what teams they played.
How many were Adrian residents?
Excuse me?
It's not time for public comment. It's only commissioner comment.
Boys minor team competing in districts in Tecumseh begins this Friday. And the boys team sponsors were Adrian Breakfast Lines Club and the Bobby Williams Lodge. Twelve boys from those two teams made up the minors all-stars, and that's sponsored by Rickets, Rickets and Associates. Boys majors teams competing in districts tonight, right now, actually. Twelve boys from Maple City Chiropractic make up our district team. Other local businesses that sponsored, that stepped up to help these Adrian Area residents or Adrian Public School students were Cliff Buett, GMC, Morning Fresh Bakeries, Bergman Law Firm, Capital Eddy Electric, and Kaepernick Insurance. So as a former Little League coach for many years with, for my children and my husband, along with my husband, who is the Adrian Area Little League president, I would like to thank all of the sponsors, all of the parents, and all of the students who have come out to play this year. It's been an incredible year, and thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone for your patience tonight as we are learning how to do this in person and via Zoom. And I didn't tell anybody here, I decided on the fly that we were going to need to do public comment in person then via Zoom because I was worried this was going to not work out as well as it did. So thank you for your patience. You know, it was our first try, and we'll, we'll get better at it as we keep going with doing this simultaneously. But we want to thank everyone for your patience with that. With that being said, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.